Good evening, folks. My name is George Maniades. I am the co-director of the MCC Center for Experiential Learning. And you probably ask, what is the Center for Experiential Learning? That sounds like some sort of very esoteric thing. What it is, it is an entity that is designed to provide instruction beyond the classroom, whether it be lectures, trips, forums, movies, learning opportunities outside the classroom. So we've infused ourself in areas like history courses, political science courses, economics, business, and other areas to show students that there is a practical application for learning. It's not just learning a theory in a book and trying to understand it, but seeing how it is applied to a real-world situation. So this evening, I'm often reminded as a historian, which I do teach history, of the Greek philosopher Plato, who struggled with what constituted a good government. And you know that Plato was very down on democracies. Didn't like democracies. He thought that democracies were kind of an excuse for mob rule. He thought that a philosopher-king was the best form of government. And I often chuckle, because he never saw the American experiment. You are the testimony of why this works. An educated society, understanding the issues, and using its power to hold its political leadership accountable, is very, very important. And I commend you for spending your evening with us. I know there's a lot of things you could be doing tonight. I'm sure the beach is probably beautiful. The picnic dinner probably went foresaw tonight, and other things. But being here tonight, you are doing what you need to do as a good citizen, educating yourselves as to the stances and the issues that affect your community. To our candidates, I commend you. To put your name up, to run for office, is a true testament to why this process works. And we know how politics is. It's kind of like making sausages. It's not a beautiful process. And to put yourself out in the public eye and to be scrutinized is a very, very important element. And I commend all of you, men and women, who have done so. Tonight, we are addressing the Muskegon County Board. And for many of us, this is very important, because it affects our daily lives maybe more so than Washington and our congressmen, or our senators. They impact our daily governance. And what we are going to be looking tonight is at a series of contested primary races. And it's very, at least I think it's very important to understand that many people don't take this very lightly. At a time and place when we do not have much political participation, there are some very hotly contested races for county commissioners. And I commend you individuals for putting your names out and participating. We have nine commission districts. Those are the boundaries. We will revisit some of these with the map as candidates run. So let's meet the candidates tonight. We're going to have two flights of the discussion. We can't bring all the candidates up at once. This would be mass chaos. So the first hour, we are going to do a select number of candidates from different districts. And then the second hour, we will invite, and it's not going to be an intermission. It'll be a quick pivot. We'll dismiss this group and bring up the other ones, and we'll start the process all over again. So tonight, joining us, District One, which encompasses Muskegon Heights, we have Pat Jones and Rilstein Wilkins, who will be participating. Both are candidates running in the Democratic primary. For the Ninth District Democrats, we have Kenneth Mahoney, and we should have had Mr. Haycoop here. And we have Eric Rothoff and his opponent, which should have been Richard Holman, who will be presenting. Now, the Ninth District, if we go back here, constitutes the area to the north, which is Blue Lake, Montague, Whitehall, White River, and Dalton Townships. For District Five, which will be part of the second flight, we have Zach Lerring and potentially his opponent, David Farhat. And for District Two, we have running under the Democratic primary Benjamin Cross and Marsha Hovey Wright. And District Two constitutes essentially the west side of the city of Muskegon. Let me just go back to the map. Pardon me. So you see, it's the lakefront area, Bluffton, and that particular region, part of Roosevelt Park. Okay. At all times, our moderator tonight, Zach Anderson, is in charge. Zach will read the questions and let everybody know their time. So at this time, let us introduce to you our moderator. But before we start with that, I want to introduce our timer tonight. Would our timer please stand up? We have spent, God knows, thousands of dollars on this timing system here. It is so high. No, no, don't sit down now. Don't sit down. You still, we have to show the crowd how this works. So if we say that a candidate has three minutes to respond, with 30 seconds to go, the sign will go up and it'll show the audience, so they know what you got, slow. In other words, 30 seconds to go. At the three-minute mark, or whatever the time limit, stop. Okay. So candidates, please respect the time limit. We do not have rolling stops like we do on the highway. Okay. The questions have been pre-written. We don't know what is going to be presented. They are in sealed envelopes. We're going to draw these out and present them to the candidates. Whatever we can cover in one hour's time, we will do. We will not get through all of them. And the second flight, it may not be the same questions. Again, it depends on which ones we draw. Our moderator, Zach Anderson. Zach, would you please stand up? Zach is a student here at MCC. He is studying and finishing his associate's degree with us in history and political science. He is very politically involved. In fact, he has been elected and serves on the Muskegon Public School Board. He is the youngest elected school board member in MCC history. I mean, I'm not MCC history, Muskegon Public School history. So, sorry. So he does a nice job. He will have total command tonight. And I will sit down and let you guys run it from here. So Zach, here you go. Take over.
Awesome. Thank you to MCC for hosting this event, and thank you to everyone who came out tonight. We're going to start off with introductions, so I'm going to go from right to left, my right to this left. Just give a little spiel about yourself, why you're running, and why you think you're qualified. We'll start with you, Mr. Rothoff.
All right. So my name's Eric Rothoff. I graduated from Holton High School here, went to Michigan State University, studied international relations at James Madison University, then went overseas and worked for 12 years. Afterwards, I came back to Muskegon, because I liked it. I actually attended MCC for a few years, picking up a little more on the computer stuff. Currently, I work in IT, repairing people's computers remotely. I'm running for county commission, because I got tired of all the bonds and all the debt and the county budget that's wanted. So we actually cut more down and not trying to keep adding with millages that try to convince people to raise taxes without telling them exactly why. The final draw was the idea of doing $96 million bond, so that we can then pay our mirrors and save some money by the differential between the interest that you would get from the bonds that we're taking out compared to the mirrors, which they expect us to have.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
I'm Ken Mahoney. I've been a county commissioner in District One or Nine, depending on the year, for the last 11 years. We have seen struggles, but we have overcome a lot in the last few years. My background is, I graduated from the University of Chicago, taught 30 years in Holton. And it doesn't mean that Eric is one of my failures either. The county continues to improve. We have a AA bond rating. We've got a 23% reserve. We balance the budget every year. We're not terrible, but we could expand our services with additional revenue. And that additional revenue is coming through economic growth in Muskegon County. Right now, last year, we had, or in the last couple of years anyway, a billion dollars worth of growth in Muskegon County. That translates into additional tax revenue. Now, when 2008 hit, we lost about $800,000 in property tax. So we've been kind of limping along until we can turn the corner. And I think the corner, if you look around downtown Muskegon, and you look around the county in general, that corner is being turned. So with that, I will shut up.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Ms. Wilkins?
Thank you. I'm Rilstein Wilkins. And I graduated from high school in Cleveland, and came to Muskegon back in the day, the real, real day. But I've seen a lot of changes in Muskegon County. I've seen changes for the better, because when I came to this county, things were worse than they were in Mississippi. And I lived every minute of it. I was downtown at these streets and some restaurants, you could not go in and even get a hamburger. Or you could go in and buy a hamburger, but you had to take it back outside to eat it. But I kept on struggling. I went to, they called it junior college. You went up to junior college. And then I attended the University of Wisconsin. And I worked for GTE for 34 years. I was the first manager, first black manager that they had. I was a training instructor, and I was the instructor for the state. So those 34 years, I learned a lot. I learned how to deal with people, and how to resolve problems without becoming angry, because sometimes you could get depressed. But it was, the Lord blessed me with a personality where He allows me to adjust, without going into violence and getting real, real upset. So I think that those are the kind of characteristics that have helped me get through life. And I had nine brothers and sisters. I was born in Oklahoma, and there are 21 black towns in Oklahoma. And we lived in one of the little towns of the 21 towns that was all black. At that time, they were very prosperous. We thought we were in heaven. You know, when white people came to town, it was just like, who are they? Where are they coming from? So it was that difference. But we had a bus station, we had an orphan home there, we had a blind school, a hotel. We had everything that would take care of our needs. And I remember once, I was riding to the big city, and it was 10 miles away. And you paid 25 cents to ride the bus for the 10 miles. And three of us little girls were going to the movie. And we paid 75 cents for two seats, for two seats, because we crowded into the two so we could be together. But we really paid for another seat. And then the white people came, and there were more white people, and the bus driver came back and told us, "Get up," so people could sit down. You know? But you learn to live through all these things. So this is why I think that I have been involved in public life, because it's a challenge when you can see some improvements that you made. And I think there's been a lot of improvements made in this county since I came, and I'd like to think I was a part of it.
Thank you, guys. All right. The first question has to do with senior issues. And the papers in front of you, all the questions are listed. You might have to do a little bit of searching, but, so I don't have to repeat it. You can find it and refer back to it. So senior issues. With the closure of Brookhaven County Medical Facility, what county services can seniors anticipate to address their needs? And we're going to start with you again, Mr. Rothoff, and then we'll move back this way, and we'll do a serpentine to answer the questions from now on.
Well, the senior millage was designed, and what it was sold for, is to help keep the seniors in their houses. That's what it was for. And that's what it should be continued to be used for. The fact that it was used for Brookhaven, in my opinion, actually is not what the millage should have been used for. Now, what all do seniors need? I will admit, I'm not a senior, so I'm not completely sure what all they need. I know we have them come and eat once a week, or once every two weeks, at the church that I attend. I know we have other services where they help get them to doctor's appointments. But the simple fact is, is the millage was voted on so that it would help the seniors, so that they can stay in their homes and not have to go into nursing homes.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
I happen to be on the Senior Resources Committee, where we allocate the money for various activities for seniors. It's not merely keeping them in homes. It's for socialization, it's for food, it's for exercise. All of those programs are being funded by this committee. We're expending and moving forward as fast as we can on items such as snow removal for those folks who can't get out and shovel anymore, or lawn care. Now, that's not something that's essential, but for somebody who can't get out of the house and do things, that is essential. Keeping them in their home is not necessarily just keeping them in a room somewhere. The idea of Brookhaven was housing. It didn't really help those citizens that much, it just housed them. It's nursing home care. And the modern shift has been away from nursing home care, keeping them in their homes as long as possible. The Senior Resources Millages allows them to do that with home-delivered meals, congregate meals, which are site-based meals. There are some exercise classes for those over 60. Everything designed to improve the quality of life for those seniors that we provide for. Not we, the taxpayers have decided they want to provide for those citizens, and make a better life for them.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Rothoff, will you please speak into the microphone a little bit more? Ms. Wilkins?
Yes, thank you. I also am on the senior millage program, and I think it's a wonderful program. And the people are doing an extraordinary job, because it's so much that seniors need. And we're getting the Meals on Wheels. We're getting, they've been talking about the snow removal and cutting of the grass for them, exercise programs and all of that. But seniors need people to talk to, and with the Meals on Wheels, they do get a chance to see a different face when they bring the food out to them. And I think that it's a wonderful job, but it's a job that we've got to work on. And in order to really identify and meet the needs of the seniors, we have to hear from you, and from the seniors themselves, so they can tell you. You can bring those recommendations to us, and I'm sure that we will be working on them. And also, I know many of us did not want to see Brookhaven closed. But Brookhaven was not getting the residents that they should have gotten. When doctors could have referred patients to Brookhaven, they just gave them, recommended somewhere else. And we could never meet that capacity of like, I think it was 100 a month that we needed to have 100 a day, or something like that. But we could not meet that. But we now, since we did get rid of Brookhaven, we're at savings now, I think, what did you say, about 23% that we have now.
Right.
So we're coming out of the hole, and we will be able to become whole again. So that is a relief, and we can still move forward and do other things.
Thank you, guys. The next question has to deal with economic development in all areas. We see a lot of development happen in the downtown area. What ideas and programs do you have in mind to ensure that economic and community development happens in all parts of the community? We'll start with you, Ms. Wilkins.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Well, I'm excited about economic development happening all over, because that's one of my goals too, is to bring development into Muskegon Heights and in the other areas. And I'm all for the development that's going on downtown, because as Muskegon grows, then it's going to expand, and I want all of us to rise to the top. So I am for developing, the development that's going on downtown, the Port Authority that we've developed, and all of this new development is going to help us, and I want to make sure that it comes to my district also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes, I think it's pretty obvious downtown Muskegon is growing and getting a lot of new development. But that's not the only place in the county that's happening. In my area, the Montague-Whitehall area, we've developed a new Walmart. It's $15 million. Our Conic is increasing their employment and investing $10 million in the community. You can also look at it with the worldwide kayak thing in Muskegon. But there are plenty of kayak places along White Lake as well that have been developed because of the enthusiasm for that. Tourism continues to grow in White Lake. Last year, my thinking is, well, the accommodations tax last year in Muskegon County in general topped $1 million again for the last four or five years in a row. White Lake contributes that to somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000 to $400,000. It's very difficult to get a room in White Lake in the summer. Now, it's difficult, but it's kind of expensive. But that development is beginning. Montague just announced a development for downtown, new civic center downtown Montague, which is the first major development in a long time. That'll be about $8 to $10 million. So it not only is affecting what's happening downtown, but it's spinning off into the other areas. Blue Lake Township, which is not a commercial area, it has camps and all of that, but if the enthusiasm is there, they begin to develop as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Rothoff?
Well, with economic development, I'm one that believes that we have to help everybody and not pick winners and losers. We have to work at making sure that for businesses, that they can get through all the red tape that's thrown up for them. We need to help make sure that they're not getting taxed, they don't get paid, or have to be charged $40,000 to $60,000 just to be connected to the sewer and water, because people made mistakes and didn't do grants. We need to make sure that, basically, again, that we don't choose and say, okay, this company, we think is going to do better, so we'll help give them tax breaks. But the other person, who may be even better, has to do it all on his own, and has to fight and actually compete against the ones that we're helping. The government should not be in charge of saying, okay, we think company X is good, and we're going to help and push them up, and force their competitors to have to have harder and work harder. For me, it's fairness, and to make it as easy as possible for the companies to start and grow here in the county.
Thank you. We'll start with you this time, Mr. Rothoff. And it's piggybacking off the last question, economic development. Would you be in favor of using tax dollars to fund a convention center for Muskegon County?
No, I won't, because that is, in my opinion, picking winners and losers. From what I've heard of what we're planning on with the convention center, the county will be helping provide the money and then giving it to one company to run. Now, the convention center may be a very good thing to have here in Muskegon County, but I don't think it's the government's function in order to do it. We can help facilitate, help run through the red tape, but I don't think it's something that we should be spending tax dollars on.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
First of all, in terms of the county, we don't have money in the game. We are simply providing some funds from the accommodations tax, which is only for development of tourism in the county. That's part of the expenditure for that. City of Muskegon is the one that bonded for this, and it will be paid back through the use of, by the hotels that are going to benefit from it. It doesn't charge, for example, in my community, Montgomery Inn is not funding the convention center at all. So taxpayer dollars are only used by those taxes that are acquired through accommodations, those tourists that come here and spend money in Muskegon County. It's an appropriate development that will draw folks to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Ms. Wilkins?
Yes, I agree with Ken. It was my understanding that the accommodations tax would take care of this, and the members of the board of the accommodations tax are going to make the recommendation of what that should be. And we won't be out of anything as a county.
Thank you, guys. We're going to start with you this time, Ms. Wilkins. This has to do with millages. What is your view on designated fund millages, such as the senior millage and the veterans' millage? Do you believe that these millages are effective, and would you support additional millages in the future for items such as youth millage or specialty courts?
Yes, you shot a lot of them at me at one time. You talked, we talked about senior millage, and what was that second one you asked?
What is your view on the designated fund millages, such as the senior millage and the veterans' millage? And then the second part, would you support further millages?
Yes, I would support one for the training and getting young people ready to work, because as we fill up the prisons, they could be learning, getting an education, a solid education on something that they could do, as opposed to us paying for the prisons, and they're just there. And you just create more residents for the prisons. And I think that we must do something for these young people to get some training, I mean, some real training where they can get a job on completion of that particular training. And then we'll be able to change this. training and then we'll be able to change this community.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. Mr. Mahoney.
My turn. Specialty millages, whether they're for seniors, veterans, or whatever, go for the public to decide whether they want to invest that kind of money in that particular item. The county board only presents those options to the community. We do not vote a millage or non-millage. We simply present it to the community. If it's a worthwhile venture, the citizens will decide to move forward with it. For example, the youth millage, which we didn't do a good job of indicating what it was for, would have given additional $6.2 million to help youth programs in Muskegon County. We continue to fund that at $4.6 million. That comes out of general fund. One of the things that the consultants have told us is to spin things off, like the library. Don't continue to fund the library when it's the citizen who want it, they can additionally pay for it. Specialty courts, drug courts, veterans' courts, sobriety courts are all effective. They do a wonderful thing and they turn some individuals around and make them productive citizens again. Anytime you can do that for an individual, it's a win for the county and for the citizens because you're not worried about that individual committing a crime in your neighborhood anymore. It's important. But again, you have to present it to the citizens. If they desire it, they will pass it and it will happen. But it's not the county board that decides whether a millage is imposed or not. It is the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Rothoff.
Well, specific county millages, in a perfect world, should not be needed. The county commissioners should be able to decide what's needed and through the general funds provide it. The problem is, we're not in a perfect world. Things haven't been decided as what the people want and that's why we've had these specialty millages. If you don't trust the county commissioners to make the proper decisions, then yes, a special millage would be necessary because that way the people can say, we want to spend $6.2 million for the youth. And then it will always be for that. And that's the people deciding and that's where the difference is. Do you trust the county commissioners to make the decisions and make sure everything that you want is funded? Or do you want to empower your voice and say, you want the money set aside for the particular items that the specific millage is for?
Thank you, guys. So this is back to county finance and the county budget. What are your views on both the financing of the jail and the unfunded pension liabilities? We're going to start with you, Mr. Rothoff.
First of all, and I was actually, we talked about this long before when the jail was coming up, the jail should not have been built without a millage. The fact that it went not to the people, but the county commission voted for the bonds in order for it to be paid for is part of the reason we're having problems. Part of the problem with that is that they were told that we'd be making money for cost savings on workers and also by being able to rent out some of the beds. My understanding, both have not come through as our advisors had told us. So now we're stuck with it. And that's now, what to do from now on? Well, obviously, we've got to pay the bonds because we have it. So we probably need a millage or something else, but we've got to get, it all deals back with the budget, we've got to get the budget under control. As for the bond for the pensions, that's actually the reason why I'm running is because I was so upset with that. I understand we have a lot of money that we have not paid in the past in order to fund the pensions and that is something we need to do. On top of which, we no longer have new people putting money into the pensions because we've stopped and did the defined contributions so that we don't have this problem again. But we still have to solve the problem for the workers that we've had, that we promised they will have a pension, we still have to cover it. But for me, borrowing $96 million so that we can put it into the market and save just a little bit of interest on the difference, assuming the market goes good and doesn't tank, is not something that I would risk myself, let alone risk for other people. And so I'm against that.
Thank you. Please hold with applause. Mr. Mahoney.
Okay. The two questions were the jail and the unfunded pensions, legacy costs or whatever you want to refer to them. The jail itself solved a 30-year problem in this county. We were settling lawsuits on a regular basis based on the old jail. We also had a maintenance issue in the old jail of almost $700,000 to $800,000 a year. So that solved a problem. Now, there were some issues in terms of the financing because at the time we borrowed the money for the jail, Detroit went bankrupt and it was difficult to get a good loan at the time. We have since refinanced those bonds. We have a standard payment per year. It doesn't vary. It's no balloon payment and it will continue until we're done. But it's this budget thing that we can plan on, we know what the cost is, and it will move forward. As far as the pensions go, everyone in the state is having difficulty. It's not just Muskegon County. We did fund the pensions at the rate at which MERS sends us an invoice every year and we have paid that faithfully for the last, forever. We've never missed a MERS payment. We are at 66% because MERS changed their assumptions and changed the method at which they are calculating how much we owe. The problem is that in the next few years, the amount of money that MERS is going to want to fund those will double. In 2019, we're looking at $9 million. By 19, and then two years later, we're lurking at $18 million. Now, that's a big hit to a county budget. What we are looking at in terms of the bonding or other mechanisms is trying to create what we normally refer to as a leveling process so that the payment will be similar every year and we will not be hit with a big bill all at once. We can budget, we can decide what it's going to be over the year and we don't have to keep coming up with additional cash because MERS changed their assumption. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Ms. Wilkins.
Yes. We have looked at the standard payment per year and we're making a lot of progress, but all of these payments and the problems that we found out that we had was a total surprise for some of us. But we have worked on it and the pension plan and we're moving ahead and it's going to be all right further down the road, but it's going to take some time for us to get there.
Thank you. Ms. Wilkins, we're going to start with you this time. This has been going viral a little bit on Facebook, so it's a topical issue. It has to do with infrastructure. So infrastructure, including roads, bridges, parks, and the Muskegon County Memorial Park on the causeway appears to be deteriorating. How will you, as commissioner, work or are currently working to address these issues which affect us all?
Well, we're working on the causeway now and those are problems where we've had a lot of volunteer work and this is something that is going to go on into perpetuity because it's something that's been there and each year it gets better, the more work that we put in it. It's going to change this entire county. And I'm willing to support the infrastructure of this county and as soon as the transportation money is released, I'll be happy to see that on the street also. But this is what we're going to have to do for the county, not just downtown Muskegon, but for Muskegon Heights. We've got a lot of people that are moving into Muskegon Heights. We need a lot of work done on houses, streets, and everything. So it's going to take a cooperative spirit to have to do that. And I mean, we've got to zone in on it and make sure that we do it because if one area of this county is sick, then all of us will be affected by it. So once we get whole, it's going to be better for all of us if we do the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. Mr. Mahoney.
I'm up. In terms of the infrastructure, the county road commission is the one that deals with, and the townships, by the way, are the ones that deal with the roads. The state of Michigan funds that occasionally. The rest of us, the county itself, has to deal with other kinds of infrastructure, for example broadband. I know, for example, in the White River area, we have lost real estate deals because the executives that wanted to buy houses, million-dollar houses on the lake shore, couldn't connect with their business in Chicago. So those revenue sales were down. Everyone who has a school child realizes that you need that kind of infrastructure for them to be able to deal with the schools. A lot of the schools now require kids to be connected, they need to have the homework over the internet, and if you don't have that kind of service in your territory, you have difficulty. We had a county or a company that was going to, and it was stated funded, that was supposed to provide internet service throughout the entire county. It started, it got it a little bit in Holton and it got some in Oak Ridge, but then it failed. They forgot there were trees in Muskegon County and you can't run the signals the way they wanted to. So that kind of infrastructure is important. Water and sewer is also important if you're going to develop certain areas. You need to have that kind of infrastructure. The big infrastructure plan that we're looking at right now through the water is a cross-channel water. And by that, I mean, because right now, if you live north of the causeway and you're on a city water supply, if the break comes at the causeway, we have no way of getting water to you. We need another line that will circulate and loop around. Those are infrastructure projects that are in the works. We continue to move forward in trying to make it a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Rothoff.
Well, some of the problems we have with infrastructure is part of the problems we've had in a lot of other things, is accountability for who's doing the work. We have to make sure that they actually do the work that they're supposed to and that there's a warranty on it, that it stays there. Fixing a road and then having to fix it two years later because it's already falling apart is not something we should have to be doing. You should be fixing it and it should stay there for a long time. I mean, a lot of the roads we use, they've been there for a long time and it's not like the new ones where you pave them and then you have to repave them in two years. Now, the one that's gone viral is the one about the Veterans Park. And while the county does own the property, they were not the ones doing the repairs. It was a nonprofit that got a grant and didn't realize that because they're removing the dam so that the fish could come into the Veterans Park, that the waters go up and they had to make sure that they didn't flood the whole park. It's not, the only thing the county, if anything, could have done is just make, is to make sure that the group that's doing the repairs finishes it and makes sure it works like it's supposed to. But it's not, again, it's not the county that was doing those repairs. It was a nonprofit organization that got a grant to do it, to improve things. As for the other infrastructure, the roads is done by the road commission. The only thing that the county really has is that we appoint road commissioners to oversee the department itself. And we need to make sure that those commissioners are ones that make sure that the roads aren't having to be repaired. That's the only oversight that the county has on that. And that's something that we should be working more on because the roads, we do have a lot of problems, a lot of potholes. A road commission just came across to one of my neighbors and filled in a pothole that's been there for a good two years now that is so deep that I have got probably five rims, the wheel covers, have popped off people's cars because it hits so hard. And they just now filled it up with gravel. Granted, gravel is good, it's stopping it from dropping as much, but this is a problem that's been there two to three years and the gravel's only going to fix it for probably a good two months, three months, and it's going to be a problem again. We've got to, when we fix things, yes, it might cost a little more to fix them right, but fix them so they last because the infrastructure is a long-term project, not a short-term.
And this is the last budget issue, it's a more broad budget issue. And what is your opinion on the current county budget? What would you do to cut costs or increase revenues? And we're going to start with you, Mr. Rothoff.
I would look more at, and I know we've done a lot of cutting, look more at cutting rather than new revenues. I know the county has been working on a new project on confirming what services are mandated by the state through the constitution and what are discretionary spendings. So we need to look more, I'm sure they're starting to work on it now, they were working on it in, was it, just this last one? Yeah, but 2017 is when they said they were doing the new plan. So we've got to first determine what we have to do and what we don't have to do. Make sure we can fund the things that we have to as efficiently as possible where we're not spending extra on it. And then look at what discretionary we have and decide if that's something we want to continue to do or to stop doing it because the discretionary stuff is, well, might be make a few people happy, is not the responsibility of the county.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney.
We have, since 2008, when the bottom dropped out, so to speak, we have been cutting to the point that services that we provide to the citizens are in danger. We don't have any extra cash. What we have done to increase revenue, because I think that's the way you have to go, you can't cut a whole lot more. You can ask a couple of the directors out here if we can cut anymore and I think they will tell you, no. We have increased revenues, for example, in assessing. We offer contracts to townships to assess their properties and we charge them for that. That's revenue to the county. We offer police officers specifically for their townships and communities and that's an extra charge to the townships if they wish to do that, but that again becomes additional revenue for the county. So there are those things that we have been able to do to get additional revenue to cover some of the costs that we incur.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Ms. Wilkins.
Yes, I think that all of our employees are cutting, they're going along, we're all trying to make this work and we've got other partners out there that are like Wimser Deck. And we're all looking out for ways to help this community, even if it's with infrastructure or with sewers or whatever. But it's going to take a combined effort for us to realize the savings that we're going to get and it's going to take a while with, because of where we had to come from on this journey of not having. So it's going to be difficult.
Thank you, guys. We're going to move into conclusions, so if we're going to have two-minute conclusions, we're going to start with you, Ms. Wilkins. You can give a little elevator pitch on why we should vote for you in the August 7th primary.
Well, I wish that you would vote for me because I am a dedicated servant of Muskegon County. I'm willing to get out there, work and try to improve this county and make it easier for all of us. And one thing I might add also, well, I'm the chair of the airport of transportation and I want you to know, we've been working and I want you to know, we've been working on getting new flights in here, and we just succeeded in getting new flights, and we'll have new flights coming in here, and we got the highest number this past month with the electric forest, so we'll have new flights coming into Muskegon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. Mr. Mahoney?
I'll just add to Realistin's comment about the airport. The last 10 days, all flights in and out of Muskegon have been full. And the electric forest had a special flight in and out, and that was full. So those kinds of things are important, they also bring revenue to the county. I have been doing this particular job for 11 years. I've been very open, I continue to be very open, I attend as many local government functions as possible. I'm still involved in the environmental issues in my area, be it Little Flower Creek with its E. coli problem, or if it's DuPont, dealing with their final cleanup requirements. That's been my goal, the environmental issues, and make sure that my part of the county feels like they're part of the county. That the services, for example, we have a bus service to Montague now, which was something that my folks up there demanded or wanted for a long time. Whether it's sustainable or not remains to be seen, but at least we got an item there. They feel like they're part of the county.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Rothoff?
I'm running for county commissioner, because I, unlike the other two, I believe that we should work more at cutting than raising taxes. I believe we have to be responsible with the money and think that all taxpayers' money is just like your own, and if it's not something that you won't spend it on, it's not something that we should spend it on. And really, that's about it.
Well, we give us, everybody a round of applause for